Hello, everybody. Welcome to our Gen Chem session. We're gonna go ahead and give it over to Dr. Taylor.
Fabulous. Okay, so we are on a lovely Monday afternoon gearing into exam four. This is gonna cover chapters nine and 10. A reminder that the exam for starts at 10:00 a.m. Just like it's done all semester, but I also know this is the time of the semester when y'all have done a variety of exams and a variety of different courses. Sometimes it's nice to have that reminder of like, hey, Sam just started at 10 o'clock in the morning. So being a little early can help. I also went ahead and grabbed the room assignments. They're the same. They have not changed, but again, guys have done a variety of exams in the past couple of weeks. So never hurts to kind of take a look at your exam room and be like, oh, yeah, this exam, this room. So you've been there before, but just a reminder. Couple other things. I pulled this one off of the announcements page of the 701 section. So this is again, something you guys do have access to, but just in case you haven't seen it on the 701 page. This is what is covered on the exam on Saturday. So chapter nine aqueous solutions. There's a couple of things that we don't cover and most of the stuff are stuff that's it's not a whole section. It's parts of sections. So that's why it says things like single displacement reactions and the activity series. Because single displacement reactions by themselves are usually Redux reactions and we definitely covered Redux reactions. And we definitely covered oxidation numbers, those things we did. But the activity series is not something that we've covered balancing reactions, not covering that. So Redux reactions, yes, but in a relatively streamlined way, there's some stuff that we left in chapter nine. Serial dilutions and gravometric analysis, energy changes and chemical reactions. And again, everything except heat and work out of section 10.2. And there's also a section that talks about lattice energy and the Born-Hermit cycle. Which sometimes makes a really lovely example to talk about, but we won't test on those things. So there's all of that information. The other thing that is hanging out for you guys, I put this in there this morning. So I am in the 701 section. On the course homepage, examples of exam blanks and keys from fall 23. It says which questions are not on the fall 24 exam for, but says chapter 11 is on the final. So what you might notice is on your exam on Saturday is two chapters. Usually it's actually three, but thanks to where fall break is, our schedule changed a bit. So I actually went ahead this morning and just took the exam for from last fall. And some of these questions are circled and they say chapter 11 on them. So chapter 11 is stuff that is good for the final, but will not be on the exam on Saturday. So that was the fastest way for me to think through this. I thought about doing this in a couple of different ways. So this is the fall 23 exam, but what you might see is a couple of these are circled. And then they say chapter 11 on them. So those are all ones that are still a good practice for the final. But you're gonna want to basically ignore them for right now. So ignore them for now, but study them for the final. But we actually pulled the, what are these called? Free response? Short answer questions are actually ones that we could still do. So these are, these are both valid. So that hopefully helps you guys out a little bit with just some resources that are posted for you. So what I'm gonna go ahead and do, you guys are welcome to put questions in the chat. I am gonna go ahead and get started with another round of just things to know. So do put questions in the chat. But first, I'm gonna make a little list of things to memorize. Cause there are things that y'all need to memorize and I am gonna cheat a little bit and I'm gonna grab these off of my slides. Maybe some of that's where they wound up. Yay. I want the strong acids and the strong bases. There we go. That's what I want. Thank you. So to memorize strong acids and the strong bases. So these are things you do need to have memorized in your brain. Good news on the strong basis at least is most of, all of your strong bases are actually things on the periodic table, but just with hydroxide. So when we take a look at a periodic table, what you might notice is your strong bases are all of these guys. So the only real trick you guys will need on your strong basis is the fact that it's not everything in group 2A. It's actually, honestly, not everything group 1A either, but those are your strong bases. So just to be aware that your strong bases do hang out on the periodic table pretty well. Your strong acids kind of let you down a little bit. Some of them are on the periodic table, but some of your strong acids are actually polyatomic ions. So the hard thing with the strong acids is that some of these guys are actually polyatomic ions. So while you've got hydrochloric acid, hydro romantic acid and hydroiodic acid, then you've got nitric acid, chloric acid, perchloric acid, and sulfuric acid. So these are things for you to memorize. The other thing that I will remind you all about again, as I know you guys are putting new questions in the chat. You guys do need to know your polyatomic ions. You especially need to know the polyatomic ions as applied to the other things you need to memorize. So while yes, technically all of your polyatomic ions are fair game for us. Especially the things that relate back to other things you've got to have memorized matter a lot. So nitrates, chlorates, perchlorate sulfate on here, all important. Another thing, where is the thing I want? It's the rules for solubility, your solubility rules. You also have to memorize these guys. Also things to memorize. So I mentioned again that there are things that are polyatomic ions in here. So nitrates, acetate, chlorate, all polyatomic ions that are in here. You should know what those are called. So these are things that are usually soluble and there's also a table that are things that are usually insoluble. And the only change I'm going to make for the insoluble is our, the insoluble table is we go ahead and basically make your soluble exceptions just be all the strong bases. So that way we do actually add a few exceptions in here. Calcium, calcium barium, it's the other strong, strong base I'm missing, strontium. There we go. But honestly, that's because your soluble exceptions to hydroxide. We, we are just gonna have them as matching your strong bases. So that's what they are. But there, there is, there is a fair amount of memorization on this exam. Sorry. Allergies. Okay. So I did want to make sure that I talked through a couple of general announcements and the stuff you have to have memorized. We will have an updated version of the equation sheet, the potentially useful information, because there are a few more equations to put on there for this exam. But that should at least get us started. So are there any questions so far?
Yes, ma'am. There is, I think, four?
Cool.
Okay. Can you, can you go over calculation questions, molarity and thermodynamics?
Okay.
Can you go over how to write out ionic and net ionic equations?
Okay.
Can you go over, I'm gonna butcher this, cari- carryometry?
Sure.
Okay. Specific heat and heat capacity calculation.
Okay.
And can you go over how to solve a thermochemical equation? And that should be all for now.
Okay.
Perfect.
Love you guys. Some of these are real vague. They're all good questions though, to be, to be fair. These are all really good questions. Let's go ahead. You know what? Let's go ahead and start with thermodynamics. Let's go ahead and start with thermodynamics. Why not? So I'm not confident that I'm gonna be able to do a calculation, one, one of every calculation for thermo and one of every calculation with molarity, but we'll see, we'll see how far we get. The good news is that calorimetry is part of that and so is thermochemical equation solving. Granted, I can think of two different things that this fourth question might mean. So we're gonna do ones with grams and we're gonna do one with Hess's law. But yeah, let's go ahead and do the new stuff and then we'll back up. So we're actually gonna start with this fourth question down here, thermochemical equation solving. Let's see if I can figure out which, what, let's see if I guess correctly for what this means. So I'm gonna make up some numbers for this. Bear with me. And we do need a chemical equation. So I'm not, I'm not there yet. Okay, so let's talk about given 50 grams of methane CH4. How much heat is released or absorbed when the reaction is complete, assume an excess of oxygen? So you would also be given a reaction for this. I will also need to take a moment to balance this and all of this would actually be given. That's a two. Did I use this this morning? I did use this this morning. Everything's gases. Everything is gases. So we are gonna assume that our value of delta H is negative 890. So I think that's, it's not that it's close to that kilojoules per mol. So there's, there's my lovely equation. Just gonna shrink this just a little bit. So, so also given is your chemical reaction along with your enthalpy value. And they gave us 50 grams of methane. So first of all, everything in the chemical reaction itself. I really wish I had done a different, that's okay. We'll talk about it. So everything in the chemical reaction itself, keep in mind that all of these things are all in moles. So that's one mole of CH4 to two moles of oxygen. And that was stuff that we used back in chapter eight. Now essentially what we want to do is to all of these two moles of this and one mole of that. We are just gonna tack on there a value of enthalpy. So we are adding more information, but our value of enthalpy is part of the reaction itself. So when we think about this then, I have 50 grams of methane. I am gonna go ahead and grab my periodic table for a moment. Where I have one carbon at 12.01 and for hydrogens at 1.008 to get me a grand total molar mass for this of 16.042 grams per mol. So in order to do this calculation, I'm gonna start off with my 50 grams of methane. And then there's 16.042 grams of methane in one mole of CH4. And then for every one mole of CH4, I get, it says negative 890 kilojoules. Which then we'll talk about what we're gonna do about that negative sign. So I can get a final answer. And this is something like 22,773, 74 by the time I round up. Kilojoules. And if I carry that sign through, it's negative. But here's the weird thing is that this problem asked how much heat is absorbed or released. So because of this, also it's kind of weird to talk about negative energy. So instead, what we are going to do is we're gonna basically replace that negative sign. And we're just gonna say that it's this amount of energy released. So anytime we can match that negative sign, so a negative sign is indicative of an exothermic reaction or heat being released. So if you can have a beaker of some sort and talk about the heat going out. This is released. So you as the person would say that it's hot. Because you are part of the surroundings, that system inside, that reaction that's happening is releasing heat. Now, part of the reason why I was like, ah, I really should have changed one of the components in here. Is if this was 50 grams of oxygen. So actually I want to do this problem one more time, but use the oxygen instead. Cause the thing I want to make sure that we're clear on is how this component where we're talking about enthalpy and the chemical reaction, how that part actually works. So if we had instead 50, I'll do a different number, sorry. 30, we'll do 30 grams. 30 grams of oxygen, same question. But now we're gonna do an excess of methane. So now 30 grams of oxygen and each oxygen 16 grams per mol. So that's dividing by 32 grams in one mole of O2. And then here's the thing, I have to come back to my chemical reaction. And if I'm using my balanced chemical reaction, I'm still using my value of enthalpy here, but now I can see. Hey buddy. Sorry, I have problems getting my AirPods to sync. And so that's my dog making that terrible noise in the background. So I'm relating my enthalpy value to my chemical reaction. Before I had one mole of methane. Now that I'm doing oxygen, though, I have two moles of oxygen. So now when I'm using that ratio, I do care about those coefficients. I did before, I cared before. But before, everything was in a one ratio. Now I have two. So it's nice to just kind of demonstrate that two moles of oxygen for that negative 890 kilojoules. So granted, new number. But we do want to make sure that we address the fact that we are gonna use those to a geometric coefficients. Oregon for 17.2 kilojoules released. So that is one way to talk about reactions, calculations with thermochemical equations. So that's one way to do it. Now, the other thing I thought might be happening. And I'm gonna make this pretty straightforward so that I can make sure I handle it correctly. One of the other ones that I thought might, might be what you're asking me when we're talking about calculations with, with equations is something like this. Where it says basically, here's my reaction, tell me what the enthalpy is. And what's given is things like A goes to B. And then something like D goes to 2B. For example, so in here then, what I need, oh, more things. First of all, more things. Positive 17, enthalpy equals negative 5. These are both in kilojoules per mol. Also, yes, these numbers are relatively straightforward so that we can do this problem relatively. Okay. So this thing up here is my goal. So this is my goal. This is what I want. But these things down here are what I have. I have these guys. So my goal is to change what I have to make, add together and look like that thing up here. This is a Hess's law question. So the first thing I noticed, I like to go from left to right, is I need 2A. And right now I only have 1A. So one of the first things we're gonna do is rewrite this first equation, but I'm gonna double everything because I need A. I double everything, which means I also double my value of delta H. So I doubled A, doubled B and doubled my enthalpy value. So absolutely everything got multiplied by two, all of it, everything. Then two things, one, I got this B stuff, I don't want it. And I need D. But when I look at D, D is a product and it's written here as a reactant. I don't want that. So I'm going to reverse it. So when I do that, I get 2B goes to D. And when I do that, I also change the sign. So my value of enthalpy, something has to happen to that as well. So essentially whatever I do to my equation, I have to do that same idea, that same thing to my value of enthalpy. If I'm talking about exchanging my products and my reactants, now basically my reaction is going the other way. So what used to be an exothermic reaction, now that it's going back the way it came, now it's an endothermic reaction. So when I reverse my equation, I'm gonna change my value of delta H. Then I don't want two separate equations. I want one equation. So what I'm gonna do, add them together. So I have 2A plus 2B goes to 2B plus D. My value of delta H, I also just add together. So this is positive 39. Now what you might notice is that this doesn't quite match. Like I have a value of delta H, but those two things don't quite match. But what you might also notice is these two things are exactly the same. So we're actually gonna get rid of those. They're exactly the same on both sides. We are just going to make them go away. And honestly, I could have done it actually up here, been like, noops, we don't have those. But sometimes it's easier for people to see the whole thing written out and then see that it's gone. As opposed, but I do try to line up my reaction arrows to make it a little bit easier to see that as long as it's exactly the same on the product side and the reactant side, then we can go ahead and get rid of it. So here's all my reaction arrows all lined up so that I can kind of easily see where, where all my stuff is. As long as I've got 2B on both sides, I get rid of it. So this is a Hess's law problem. So this is the other thing that I thought of when you said like calculations with thermochemical equations and I'm like, hmm. Wonder which one you mean. We'll just do both. No worries. Although usually Hess's law is the first of three ways to calculate enthalpy. Fun and games. Fun and games. So there are examples of Hess's law hanging out, especially in the end of chapter questions. This is a good one to practice, but this is also one that's kind of difficult to demonstrate a whole lot. Because me problem solving for you is not super helpful, but this is again, I did not quite get to this in my class today. I was dead. I just can't cover all of thermo without needing Wednesday. Okay, so I, I think I've done thermochemical equation solving. That's what I think I just did. Cause I did something that involved grams and moles and I did a Hess's law question. So that's what I did. Again, if that was not what you had in mind, then I just, I need some more words to figure out and make sure that I'm going in the right direction. We'll just keep going backwards and we'll do some calorimetry next. Yeah, we'll go ahead and do one calorimetry question. Okay. So I have to admit, when I do calorimetry questions, they always tend to sound exactly like the one on the slides. Maybe that's what you want. Hopefully that's what you want. Oh, let's. Should we do the one I hate the most? The one I hate the most is solve for final temperature. Let's do a straight one first, just in case you guys haven't seen this. A metal pellet with a mass of 55.5 grams at a temperature of 82.9 Celsius is placed into 25 degrees Celsius water into, oh, you need a mass. Mass 125 grams. Final temperature of both is 29? Yeah, 28.7 degrees Celsius. What is the specific heat of the metal? The specific heat of water is 4.184 joules per gram per degree Celsius. Going to make this a little bit bigger. But this will give us something to work with. So as you might imagine, there's a lot of different versions of this question. My least favorite version is the ones where it asks you what the final temperature of the water is. Mostly because it just requires a lot more algebra. But it's doable. But that's why I said, let's, let's do a, a straight one first. So here's the game. There is a cup. It's got a pellet in it and there's water. So for the water, we've got some information. I did not bother to do degree symbols. Sorry about that. There we go. So the water, we know that it's 125 grams. That's the mass. We also know that the specific heat is 4.184 joules per gram per degree Celsius. The change in temperature, we weren't given, but we can find it. The initial temperature is 25 degrees Celsius. The new temperature is 28.7 degrees Celsius. That's all. That's plenty. And then the pellet, we know the pellet has a mass of 55.5 grams. And it also has an initial temperature, which is now 82.9 degrees Celsius and a final temperature of 28.7 degrees Celsius. Lovely. We want the specific heat. So this is where we do need an equation, Q equals SM delta T. I was talking to some folks after class today and they were like, I think I've seen this before, but when I saw it was Q equals MCAT. Because so this, so if you've seen this before, these two are supposed to be the same equation. So anyway, I'm gonna continue talking about this as SM delta T. But again, if you've seen this lower, this other one with a lowercase C, those are supposed to be the same. I, I am actually gonna delete that just because I'm gonna use a capital C for heat capacity. So I think this causes some problems, but if you've seen Q equals MCAT, it's supposed to be the same equation. So I pulled all the stuff out of the problem. So I pulled all the stuff out of the problem. Yay. Um, so now as I talk about the Q of the water, I just need the mass and the specific heat, so specific heat's four point one eight four. The mass is a hundred and twenty-five. The change in temperature is going to be final minus initial. So the final is that twenty-eight point seven, the initial is twenty-five, that gives me three point seven. And now I can add all these things together. Multiply, we're going to multiply all these things together. So that's what we're doing. So this is a nineteen thirty-five point one gram, ah, not grams, grams went away. Kilojoules, joules, what is it? Ah. Joules, the specific heat is the thing that has my unit in it. So when you don't know what unit this, you can go back and look at the specific heat because that's where my unit of energy is, it's in joules. By the way. So that is my cue of the water. Uh, a couple of things you should note. Um, one, since my water is going from cooler to warmer, this is essentially an endothermic process, I have uh, heat being absorbed by the water. So my value of heat is positive. Um, and that is to match the fact that my temperature is going up, so energy is being absorbed, so this is overall positive. Um, when I then go to talk about my pellet, my, um, my metal block, whatever it is, realize that my cue of my water, that's the amount of heat that was absorbed. That heat only has one place it could have come from, and that's the pellet. So my heat should be exactly the same, but the opposite direction. And when I take a look at my change in temperature, this should also be final minus initial. But when I go to look at my change in temperature of my pellet, um, notice that now I'm actually going to get a negative number. And this should happen, getting a negative number for something that is giving off heat is what we should expect. Um, so I then wind up with a cue of my pellet to be the same number for the water, just negative. One nine three five point one. Um, and so now I can go ahead and calculate, or use that same formula before, that SM delta T. Um, S is what we're solving for, the mass is fifty-five point five grams. Uh, you might notice that I didn't even bother to go all the way back up to the question. And honestly, that's because, uh, we took all that time to get those numbers out of the question. Um, and that's to make it a little bit easier to read the whole thing because that question's just got a bunch, a bunch of numbers in it. Uh, so it's a bit easier to digest. Um, when it is all in um, written out in a way that's not all in the question. Jewels per gram per degree Celsius. Okay. So there's a lot of stuff happening in this problem, no joke. Um, so things that are happening in this problem, the water is absorbing heat, so the water is positive or positive, uh, heat for that. The, um, pellets or that metal is releasing heat, so that's why that's negative. And you might notice that my specific heat value in the end is positive and it should be. Um, so those things that are negative really should only be my heat or my change in temperature. Those are really the only two things that could have negative signs. Uh, and they should cancel out. Um, so my specific heat and my mass are both things that ought to be positive numbers. Uh, so if you ever wind up with a negative number for one of those, just kind of go back and reread the question and see what happened. Because what I mean, what I mean by that is to go back and reread and see what thing got warmer and what thing got cooler. Because in a problem like this, something's releasing heat and something's absorbing heat, so something's getting warmer, something's getting cooler. I don't know what it is, but those are, those are the two things that are happening in here. So keep those things in mind. Since I mentioned my least favorite thing is, um, calculating change in temperature, I assume someone's going to ask me for that in the chat. Um. Let's go ahead, actually, uh. Let's see where I am. I'm just going to add change and calculate final temperature to my list. Uh, because you guys might, you guys may or may not want that run right now. Um. Calorimetry. Um. So I'm going to add that one to my list, but I'm going to go ahead and cross this one off for right now. Um, the other one I'll go ahead and add to this list, uh, is a bomb calorimeter question. Again, I don't know if you guys want that run right now or not, uh, but that's another style, um, of these kinds of questions. Okay. Um, so I've done, I've actually done that many things. Um, but let's go ahead and do another call for questions and see where we're at. So are there any new questions so far?
Uh, yes, ma'am, there is quite a bunch, actually, but
Great.
Um, okay. Uh, can you please do a titration problem?
Yeah. Awesome, what else?
Can you do a follow-up going over questions two, three, eight, fourteen, and twenty-eight in exam for F twenty-three?
Cool. Great.
Uh, could you go over strong and weak electrolytes and precipitation and solubility rules?
Uh, what came after weak electrolytes?
Uh, solubility rules.
Okay, cool. Anything else?
Uh, yes, how do you determine an enthalpy number?
Yeah. What else?
Um, can you go over oxidation numbers, spectator ions, and heat of combustion? And I think that's it.
Cool. Okay. Um, so the reason why I'm starting to tilt, I tilted my head a little bit in confusion. Um, was over heat of combustion. Um, I need to know what you mean by that because otherwise I think I did it already. Um, because basically, when we did this question that asked about fifty grams of methane, how much heat's absorbed or released? Um, this thing, this enthalpy value can be called the heat of combustion. Uh, so essentially, anytime you see heat of, um, that almost always is referring to a value of enthalpy. Um, so in this case, so a lot of them just refer to it as things like the heat of the reaction, enthalpy. Um, but you can also call it things like the heat of neutralization, if you're measuring the temperature change of an acid-base reaction. Um, or the heat of salvation, uh, if you're measuring the temperature change when something dissolves. Um, so even though it may sound a little bit silly to have something where it's like, um, for, for, for real, sodium chloride going to sodium chloride aqueous. Um, and then, ah, what is this delta H value? Hmm, it's really small, we're just going to call this one point five. Um, kilojoules per mole, it's very small, and I forget if it's negative or positive, to be honest with you. Um, because it's super small. Um. So you can actually have, so this, this enthalpy value, you can just call it enthalpy because it is, but it's also referred to um, as the enthalpy of salvation. Um, because my sodium chloride is dissolving in water. Um, so it's got a fancy name that's attached to it. Um, so same idea, this one here that's in yellow now is also the heat of combustion. Because this is an example of a combustion reaction. Um, so that enthalpy value is an enthalpy value, it's the heat of the reaction, it's also the heat of combustion, since it's a combustion reaction. Um, so if that did not answer your question, just go ahead and put something else in the chat with some more words, so I understand a little bit better. Um, but otherwise, hopefully that helps, so yeah, there's heat, heat of a lot of stuff. Um, because we've been able to measure enthalpy for a really long time, so it's a lot of different words to describe those things. Uh, da-da-da-da, my follow-up video, yay. Um. And I'm not going to look at those right now. Although twenty, ah. So, tr- trust me, I get it. Um, but I know that twenty-eight is one of the short answer ones, and it makes me internally a little bit sad because that means that our key isn't good enough. It's totally okay, like, you're, you're definitely welcome to ask for it. Um, but basically, whenever I see somebody ask about the, um, same thing happens in office hours, when somebody asks me about the, uh, the short answer question, I'm always like, oh, no. Our key isn't good enough. You can't figure it out. We should have done a better job last year. Okay, uh. Hold on, the things that I added, I'm going to put in parentheses, um, so I can focus on what you guys want. Ooh, let's do strong and weak electrolytes. Um, I'm also going to make a little note on determining delta H. Uh, there are three different ways to do this. Um, there is Hess's law, which I already did, I'm going to give myself a checkmark for that. Um, there's also, um, heats of formation. And there's bonded bull peas. So there are in fact, three different ways to do that, but I already did Hess's law, haha. Okay. Um, we'll start with strong and weak electrolytes. So. First of all. Um, so strong electrolytes. I think it's Dr. Wong who has a like, a, a, an umbrella. Oh, gosh, this is supposed to be an umbrella, that looks a little bit more like Batman, that's okay. It looks a little bit like nothing, that's fine. Um, so, please get rid of that. Uh, so strong electrolytes, weak electrolytes, non-electrolytes, so those are my three categories, one, two, three. Under strong electrolytes, have to be strong acids, which you're going to have to memorize. Strong bases, that you're going to have to memorize. And soluble ionic compounds that you have to memorize. So solubility rules. Weak electrolytes are weak acids and weak bases. And there are some different ways to recognize those as well. Um, the main deal with weak acids, um, so weak acids are often things where it's an acid, but it's not a strong acid. Um, so we have a tendency to put things like HNO2 because one of your strong acids is nitric acid. So a weak acid looks kind of like your strong acid, but it's not. Um, a weak acid can also be something that has a positive charge to it. Um, so there are things that have positive charges because they have an extra proton, and so they are ready to be proton donors uh, in that regard. Your weak basis, on the other hand, uh, there's NH3, that's kind of your like, obviously, this is definitely a weak base. Um, I say obviously with like a hand motion sweep because, um, honestly, we use it a lot as an example. Um. So I understand that you might be like, how am I supposed to know that, like, well, honestly, we use it as an example a whole lot. Um, the other weak bases are things that, um, basically are your polyatomic ions, but they're negative. So if positive things can be weak acids, negative things, polyatomic ion wise can be weak bases, so let's use, you know, two negative, and let's do another one. Um. I really like this guy. Um, now the weird thing about this one that I just wrote down, which is bicarbonate, um, this can be a weak base or a weak acid. So I can actually stick this one over here because it's got a proton in front, so it has a proton that it can donate, but it also has a negative sign, so it can also gain a proton, it can do both. Um, regardless, it would definitely count as a weak electrolyte. So the goal is to look for weak electrolytes, counts as both. Uh, non-electrolytes, these are things that are neither. Right? Um, so these definitely need to be covalent compounds. But some of these things I already have written down are already covalent compounds. Um, but not acids or bases. So honestly, we have a tendency to do either things like, um, methane, CH4. Um, we could also do things like, um, sugars, so that's C6H12O6. Also a non-electrolyte. Um. Use red and green. Um, so these are some of the things that count as non-electrolytes. So honestly, to me, um, I personally cover electrolytes after I've done acids and bases. Uh, because knowing your strong acids and your strong bases and your weak acids and your weak bases covers you for a lot of your electrolyte, um, things. So, because basically, it's just an umbrella term to talk about things that make ions or don't make ions. So electrolytes do form ions in solution, non-electrolytes do not. So, strong and weak electrolytes. Wrong or weak form ions in solution. Somebody mentions going over the solubility rules, um. I can go ahead and talk through them. Um, I think what people are usually looking for when they ask me to go over solubility rules is they're looking for like something that's going to make them super easy to memorize, and there are some things that are helpful, but there's nothing that makes this like, fast. Um, but there, there are some patterns to pay attention to. Um, one of the fact things is that you might notice there's a big blank space here. Um, that means there are no exceptions. So as far as a place to start in your memorizing, these two lines, um, of, is personally where I would start memorizing. Uh, because they are the place where there are, there are no exceptions. Absolutely everything, um, is soluble if it has an alkali metal cation. Hydrogen is not an alkali metal, by the way. So when we say alkali metal cations, um, we mean these guys, lithium, sodium, potassium, rubidium, cesium. Um, francium, sure, um, the reason I say, uh, like that is because, uh, you might know that francium's atomic mass is in parentheses, francium's radioactive. Uh, like really radioactive, so we tend to typically don't think about its chemical properties, we think about its nuclear properties. So that's why it's not included. Um, or or the ammonium ion, NH4. So you got this list of alkali metals, and you got to tack something on to it. It also has a positive charge, but you got to add that one. Um, then you've got some anions. There's three of them, they're all polyatomic ions. Two of them are strong, are the ion off of a strong acid, but one of them's not. So nitrate, chlorate, and acetate. Um, then you've got things that are usually soluble, these are on the periodic table, chlorine, bromine, iodine. You look, you're back with like strong acid sort of stuff. Um, but there's exceptions. Um, silver, mercury, one, lead. Sulfate's usually soluble. Um, you got the same set of exceptions and then you add a couple more. So this is the hard thing with this solubility guidelines is, is that there's not one way to memorize these or learn these. Um, practice helps, um, but you basically do have Practice helps, um, but you basically do have to just spend some time memorizing these. Um, you just, you just do in there. Um, again, things that are always insoluble, um, carbonate, phosphate, chromate, sulfide. And I know there's four of those. Uh, the thing that I think is helpful to point out is that the things that are soluble exceptions here are all the things we just said have no exceptions. So the list that we said there's no exceptions, these are always soluble, no matter what you do, those are the exceptions. Um, and then the only thing we really change with the exceptions in the hydroxide is that we make the exceptions just be all the strong bases. So hopefully that helps in your precipitation memorization. Um, one thing that I will tell you guys, um, that I think I told my classes, I don't know if I told you guys on the exam review, um, when I had to memorize things. Um, that to me was very, um, rote. Um, I would put them on my bathroom mirror. So when I brush my teeth at night and in the morning, I would stare at whatever it was for those like two minutes. Um, and it seems kind of silly. And in some ways it was, uh, but that like repetition, right? So that way, if I'm trying to remember something, I'm like, okay, what's the means always soluble? The alkaline models, the alkaline models, the alkaline models are always soluble. Um, and you could basically add on to it as you go. So it's Monday. So by Saturday, you've got still a couple of days where like that exposure, um, to those can help. Um, so yeah, highly, highly recommend the bathroom mirror because stare at it at least when you brush your teeth in the morning and at night. I actually had a class in grad school where I'd memorize the periodic table. That was not my favorite. Okay. So we have done strong and weak electrolytes. We've done the solubility rules. Let's go ahead and do oxidation numbers. Um, and then hit up spectator ions. So that'll also hit ionic and netionic equations. Okay, great. Oxidation numbers. Okay. So a couple of things. Um, so some of these kind of straightforward. Um, actually, since we already did it, oh, yeah, again. Already did methane as a gas plus oxygen as a gas. Goes to carbon dioxide plus two water. Always must can make all these gases, make my life easier. Um, so let's say I want to do oxidation numbers for everything here. Easiest thing to do, start off with is all of my elements are zero. That is elemental oxygen. Other things that are also elements that you've seen in other reactions usually are things like copper as a solid. It would also have an oxidation number of zero. Uh, but all elements in their elemental form are zero. Includes oxygen. So gases, gases are included, not just metals. Then um, there is a table. So I have both like the messy table and I have my redone table. So here's my redone table. I like my redone table because it's big. Um, I will also point out what you might want. So here's my redone table. Um, I will also grab the regular table and I will point out why you might want that. So, um, my section put these two parts side by side for just a minute. Uh, so first of all, my table and the table nine point five should actually have the same information on them. Um, so when we review oxidation numbers, it's table nine point five in order from top to bottom. Um, so we basically are supposed to start here and go all the way down and do these guys last. And the main reason why I say that is because when you have things like water, um, it has both hydrogen and oxygen in it. You're supposed to do the hydrogen first. So for water, my hydrogen should have a, um, oxidation number of plus one. The whole thing of water is neutral overall. That's zero. I have two hydrogens at positive one each plus one oxygen. So this is positive two plus an oxygen is equal to zero. My oxygen is equal to negative two. So trying to figure out which one actually comes first and what happens. Um, you're supposed to apply table nine point five in order. So the hydrogen comes before the oxygen. So I like my table because for those of y'all watching, it's probably easier to read because it's bigger. That's why I made it. Now, the thing though, that my bigger table doesn't have is all these words. All of these words can be useful because one of the questions that often comes, which it is, if I have to apply these in order, when are the times where this is not true? Because what you might have noticed, I needed to do the hydrogen first. I did the hydrogen first and I did the oxygen. But if I had just pulled them off the table, I would have gotten the exact same information. I would have gotten the exact same answers. So this table out of your textbook actually has the times when it matters. Um, so my favorite example is hydrogen peroxide. So here's hydrogen at a, at two. Um, this entire thing is zero. There's two hydrogens at a positive one plus two oxygens. And all that needs to equal zero. So positive two plus two oxygens is equal to zero. Two oxygens has to be equal to negative two, one oxygen is therefore negative one. So there is an, so there is an example where the order matters. Um, if you did the oxygen first and then the hydrogen, you'd get a different answer for what that, uh, for what your hydrogen should be. Um, for either one of them. But so in this case, order definitely matters because that hydrogen, you're really called, uh, your oxidation numbers do matter. Even though there's somewhat of a bookkeeping method, they are also supposed to be representative of, of things like electrons and who has the most electrons. That hydrogen can't do anything else aside from that little plus one, um, unless it's paired with just the right thing. Um, because there is an exception in here. So this is just something to keep in mind, uh, but your textbook does have basically the exceptions. Uh, the, the exceptions are listed. Oh, we only did two of these. Okay. Um, so methane, hydrogen is positive one. The whole thing has to be neutral. There's four positive ones and one carbon. Uh, so carbon is just going to be equal to negative four. And last but not least, carbon dioxide, oxygen's negative two, but there are two of them. Two times negative two plus a carbon. So carbon now is going to be positive four. So now I have all my oxidation numbers out there. Um, so I did a peroxide example. I also want to do a, um, um, a polyatomic ion. Um, I just need to pick one. Um, we'll do chlorate. Um, so the whole deal with polyatomic ions is again, we're still going to do oxygen first. The whole thing is negative one. There are three oxygens at negative two each plus a chlorine. So my chlorine plus negative six is equal to negative one. My chlorine here then is a positive five. So essentially oxidation numbers give you like little mini algebraic equations essentially to solve. Um, Stu, I want to do one more real quick. Uh, we're going to see six, H six. Uh, hydrogen's one. This is a molecular compound. So the whole thing is neutral. Six times positive one plus six carbons. Six carbons plus six is equal to zero. Six carbons is equal to negative six. Each carbon is negative one. One of the things that hopefully you noticed as I was doing those oxidation numbers is that we write an oxidation number for each atom. When I'm solving, I sometimes need the total contribution. So I do sometimes need to know the total contribution, but when I report my oxidation number of carbon, notice I'm reporting negative one. I'm not reporting negative six. I'm reporting negative one. I'm reporting the oxidation state of each atom of carbon. So I'm going to assume that each carbon atom is identical. Okay, we've come this far. Clearly we should do, um, oxidizing and reducing because look at all the stuff we already did. Um, so um, I know you guys didn't ask me for that, but it's just, it's just kind of habit at this point. Um, this is zero, one, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. So my carbon starts at negative four. And it goes all the way to positive four. My hydrogen is at positive one and it stays there and does nothing. My oxygen um, starts at zero. And my oxygen goes to negative two. Oxygen. Hydrogen. So I can go ahead and put each thing, I can put each element here on that, that's here in my reactants. I can put all of them on my number line and see what happens. My hydrogen's basically not doing anything. Uh, my hydrogen is, is not participating essentially. Um, it's molecularly bound to things. So I mean, it's stuck in along for the ride, but the hydrogen is in fact, just at positive one, the whole time and doesn't change, doesn't exchange electrons. Carbon, on the other hand, starts at negative four, it goes to positive four. This arrow where I'm showing that it's going towards the positive side, going, becoming more positive means that it has lost electrons, means that it's oxidized. So the carbon in the methane is oxidized. I will write that down. Some, oh, I wrote somebody down so many things. Um, carbon in CH4 is oxidized. That also means I can write down this methane, CH4 is the reducing agent. Whatever thing was oxidized is the thing that lost the electrons. It essentially is bringing electrons to the party and dropping them off. It doesn't want them anymore. It's losing the electrons. Which means that that thing that lost the electrons is allowing the reduction to happen. In order for something to be reduced, something has to gain electrons. But if nobody brought any electrons, you can't have reduction happen. Um, so something's got to bring electrons so that this whole thing can actually do anything. Uh, methane is the thing that brings the electrons. Notice that for the reducing agent, we do go ahead and list the whole thing. Whereas when we talk about the thing that's being oxidized, we just do the individual elements. Uh, I think Alex does this. Uh, so it's, it's just kind of a note of how we usually talk about things. Where's my reaction oxygen? Because one of the other things to note is that whenever we're doing oxidation or reduction, the only thing I care or agents, the only thing I care about are my reactants. I have to use the products because I need this number line thing that we did. Uh, I need to know where things are going. I need to know what happens. But whenever I'm naming what gets oxidized, what gets reduced, what's the oxidizing agent, what's the reducing agent? I only want the reactants. My answer is only in the reactants. Uh, my oxygen, it's pointing to the negative side. It's becoming more negative. It has a reduction in charge. It goes from zero to negative two. It therefore is the species reduced. It is the thing therefore that is taking the electrons. It's allowing the oxidation to happen. So in this case, I can just write O2 is reduced. And O2 is the oxidizing agent. Also, I am so sorry that we have this language. It sucks. This language is bad. I would change it if I could. Um, but they don't ask me. So we're stuck with it. So that's oxidation numbers. Let me scroll. How many questions go? Oh, they're there. Okay. So we did oxidation numbers. Um, let's go ahead and do spectator ions. Yeah, yeah. Um, and then after spectator ions, that'll also include ionic and netionic equations. Okay. Okay, so here's, here's the thing. Well, I was dragging my feet a little bit. Um, let me think about this for just a minute. Um, I like sodium. Yes, I do. Plus, hmm. Hate to use silver nitrate so much, but it's just so easy for me. Um, so I have to switch these around. Sodium, nitrates. Um, and silver phosphate. Notice I don't have any state symbols yet. I'm going to go and balance this real quick. A three goes right there and a three goes right there. Um, so granted, um, a couple of different ways I could go ahead and pull off, how do I know what is, what? Um, um, so the first thing I'm going to do for solubility rules, I'm going to look for alkali metals. And see how far that gets me. So step one, look for alkali metals. Sodium's an alkali metal. It shows up there and it's aqueous and it shows up here. So this is aqueous. That is totally soluble. Then, um, I realize you guys might not have these memorized yet, but honestly, this is going to be insoluble for both of these, uh, because silver is very rarely soluble, uh, and phosphate is also usually insoluble. Uh, so I'll go ahead and scroll back up just to show you where that is on the chart. Uh, because really, um, it's here where phosphate is usually insoluble. Um, unless it has an alkali metal with it, which is how it was soluble in the first place. Uh, my other mumbling about silver usually being insoluble is silver is one of the things that is an exception. Uh, if it can, if it's usually soluble, but has an exception soluble or silver is the insoluble exception. Uh, so both of those things definitely insoluble. So now I've got my stuff. So this thing is called the molecular equation. Now I'm going to do the ionic equation. Um, I'm going to, um, write strong electrolytes. But not weak ones. But this is also precipitation reaction. There aren't any weak electrolytes here. Which means yes, this would be different, um, if it was acids and bases. But first things first. Strong electrolytes, which is basically all of my reactants, ah, three. And two of my products, one of my products. Look at me actually putting state symbols in. I wore in my classes that I tell them that state symbols are super important and then I forget to put state symbols in. Um, like a lot. So I have put in state symbols even though I didn't want to. Because gosh, that takes up a lot of space. Uh, so strong electrolytes are ions, but my precipitate is all together. So this is my precipitate. Um, it's not written as ions because it's insoluble. It's a rock. It's not dissolving. So since it's not dissolving, I don't write it as ions. When I go to write my net ionic. I need to remove spectator ions. Remove spectator ions. These are going to be things that are exactly the same on both sides. And I will show you some acid-base reactions as to why I say exactly the same. Um, so here is my sodium and here is my sodium. That's a spectator ion. Here is my nitrate. There is my nitrate. So my spectator ions I'm getting rid of is sodium and nitrate. So when I go ahead and write my final net ionic reaction, uh, I've got my phosphate. Plus my silver and look, I do have stoichiometry. I need three silvers. I'm writing three silvers. It is balanced. I've had a couple of people ask about, do you have to balance your net ionic reaction? And the answer is yes. And look, here's it where you actually do have to have those three silvers to actually make this work. Um, so we've removed our spectator ions, we removed the sodium and the nitrate. Uh, so all we really have is what forms the solid. So there's an example of your molecular ionic and net ionic reactions and precipitation reactions. I mentioned some things about acids and bases, so let's go ahead and demonstrate those. I've already been demonstrating, um, HNO2 as a weak acid. So I'm going to keep it up. So here is HNO2. It is aqueous. It dissolves. It's fine. And sodium hydroxide, it's a strong base. And that's going to make water. That's a liquid. And it's also going to make sodium nitrate. That's aqueous. Nitrite, sodium nitrite. Sorry. Uh, when I go to rewrite this, uh, as an ionic equation, um, strong electrolytes are written as ions. But not weak electrolytes. So this HNO2, that nitrous acid stays all together. It's a weak electrolyte. That's, that's what happens to it. Finish this out. My water is a liquid. It stays all together. My sodium is really a soluble compound. Sodium things are always soluble, so I get to write that out like that. Whenever we talk about weak electrolytes or talk about weak acids, uh, there sometimes is this notion of like, but it does ionize and that's true. It ionizes. But the hard thing is, is when we say it ionizes, oh, there I go forgetting state symbols. That's fine. This thing on the right, it does nine hundred and, it does a bunch. Um, and then those ions, it mainly makes one time. So when I have a solution of nitrous acid, almost all the molecules are all together. Almost all the molecules are unionized. They're not ionized. One time out of a million, they're ionized. But we are going to go ahead and represent the majority. We're going to go ahead and represent most of what's happening in solution. The nine hundred thousand, nine, the nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine molecules that are all together. That's what we represent in the equation. We represent the majority. This one time out of a million that it ionizes, I mean, it happens. It's the reason why it's a weak electrolyte. So we do honor the fact that it happens because that's, that's the weak electrolyte part. But we don't show that off in an ionic equation because it's it's just not quite honest. Like, it's not the majority of what's happening. Uh, there are still spectator ions, so I still have sodium. Uh, but that's actually it because my nitrous acid is all together on one side. But when it reacts, that proton actually does go to the water in this acid-based titration reaction is basically what this is. Um, so when I go to go ahead and write the net ionic, most of this is still here. Uh, so my net ionic with that weak acid involved is kind of long. Uh, there's a lot of pieces in here, but again, should still be balanced, should still have state symbols. That side I was mostly for myself because I do have a tendency to forget to write in my state symbols. So hopefully that helps with ionic and net ionic. Um, so just remember that when you're writing ionic equations, ionic equations are all about representing strong electrolytes, strong acids, strong bases, soluble ionic compounds. Those are the three things you get to write as ions. Everything else stays together. Solids, liquids, weak electrolytes stay all together. So just some sort of things to kind of keep in mind as you're going through, uh, when you're doing these. Okay, let me go ahead and check on our list. Okay, I've done ionic, net ionic equation. That one's done. Uh, and I did spectator ions. That one's done. I have absolutely no idea when I last called for questions. So I'm going to go ahead and call for questions, even though I definitely still have more things I could talk about. I'm just going to go ahead and check in. So are there any more questions in the chat right now?
Uh, yes, ma'am. There is a couple. Uh, is it a strong acid even if it doesn't have a hydrogen element like, um, NO3 or ClO3?
Okay.
Could you go over what makes an acid an acid and what makes a base a base?
Okay.
Um. Could you do question two, six, eight, ten, eleven, fourteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-five on F twenty-three exam?
Cool.
And that should be the end of it.
Great. Okay, I'm just going to highlight these for myself. This one always reminds me, there's always, I never do it. Uh, but there's always part of me that it's like, you know, it would be a really good use of my time would be to make a video that just goes through the whole gosh darn thing. Um, especially like this year, I'm like, you know, if I just did like a, like a recap of all, of all of the version A of the exams, then I would just have them. Um, but I don't. Okay, um. So for this first question, um, is it a strong acid without the hydrogen element? Um, no, uh, which goes into my acid-based definitions. Uh, so there are two different sets of definitions for acids and bases. Um, one of them, I'm just going to grab this so I spell it correctly. Cute, he would think I would be more confident in my spelling. But aside from the fact that there's an H in here somewhere, I don't know where it goes. Uh, there we go. Okay, that is where I thought it would. Just going to grab this. So hanging out in your notes, I don't know where, but somewhere in your notes, I promise you, there are the definitions of acids and bases. Um, and there are two different definitions. Um, and we, for the most part, are going to care about the Bronsted definition. Um, also help if I would spell the word definite, definite, no, that's, that's spelled correctly. All right. So the Arrhenius definition talks about an acid releasing H plus in solution and a base releasing hydroxide in solution. Um, and this actually works just fine for strong acids and strong bases. Um, so strong acids and strong bases. This actually works just fine. Um, so the thing is, is that to be an acid, you've got to think, you've got to have something that's going to go ahead and up the proton concentration or up that hydronium concentration. That's part of it, part of being an acid. In the Bronsted definitions, we then use donor or acceptor definitions. So in this case, then my acid has to be a proton donor, but this is still going to fit my HCl and sodium hydroxide. Um, because I'm still looking at something that can accept a proton. So my hydroxide here essentially is accepting this proton off of my hydrochloric acid to form water. My, so my base is accepting a proton. My acid is donating a proton. This is almost always the better seen in weak species. So here's NH3 and water forming NH4 plus and hydroxide. Um, so in this case, my NH3 plus, um, accepted a proton. So my NH3 plus, my NH3 is neutral and it gains a proton to go to NH4 plus, the ammonium ion. The water then lost a proton. So my water here then is an acid. My ammonia here is a base. Um, but the thing especially is pro, is acids have to have a proton. So it doesn't matter in acids if you're talking about the Bronsted definition or if you're talking about the Arrhenius definition. There is somewhere, there is an H plus that's moving. It's the bases that look a bit different between the two definitions. The Arrhenius definition has a base that can just release H plus, uh, OH minus, can just release hydroxide in water. Um, but in Bronsted, it just accepts a proton. Um, so that's where, uh, you, I mean, you can kind of get the, like, there's hydroxide going on. Um, but the fact is, is that it's really the notion that my NH3 didn't really bring any hydroxide to the table. Um, all I can do is accept a proton and when it does, you're often left then with water at least, um, having that hydroxide in place. So I think that should help out with acids and bases. Got to have the proton. Um, and acid-based definitions. Okay, so that answered those questions. Now I'm on to titrations. I'm all the things that are long. Oh no, I did this to myself. That's not a surprise. Okay. Um, let's go ahead and do titrations because we can also do calcu, actually, we'll do calculations with molality first. Um, also, I think I've done the thermo calculations except for calculations with the final temperature and a bomb calorimeter. This, um, but I think I actually now have all the thermo calculations out somewhere. Because there's also delta H of formation and bond enthalpies. Um, so let's just do some, some molality calculations and then some titration questions. Let's see how far I get. Let's do that. Sorry, I was thinking about that for a little while. Um, let's have some fun. Hold on, I'm getting there. So it's sodium hydroxide, I got phosphoric acid, I got water, I got sodium phosphate. Um, we are going to say that we have um, zero point one molar sodium hydroxide. And we're just going to do fifty milliliters. And we're all going to add to that, um, twenty-five, nope, yeah. Twenty-five milliliters of a zero point eight molar phosphoric acid solution. Is that what I want? No, I did that backwards. Sorry. Wait, 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 wait. Yes. More. Yeah, that's what I want. Ah, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. This is the problem with me making stuff up sometimes. It's a problem. Um, and then what I'm actually going to ask is, um. What is the final? Um, I always want the amount of water. What's the final amount of water? Produced. I'm I'm going to go with this. It'll be fun. Yeah. That looks weird. So this is going to be a molality question. I'm just trying to make sure that it will also work. Um, or at least be honest enough to work for a, um, acid-based reaction. Okay, so first of all, I have amounts of sodium hydroxide. I have an amount of phosphoric acid. And I was asked for the amount of water. This is a limiting reactant problem. So you should still be able to do those. Um, but it's all in molarities. Yuck. So since we're doing limiting reactant, we need moles. So I have sodium hydroxide and because I'm in molality, molality is equal to moles divided by liters, which means I can rearrange this and say that molality times liters will give me moles. And that is what we're going to do. So I want the moles of sodium hydroxide. And that's going to be zero point zero five liters times zero point one molar. I'm taking my fifty milliliters and saying that there is a thousand milliliters in one liter. So that's where that came from. And that's my sodium hydroxide. Since this is a limiting reactant problem, I'm actually going to go ahead and just solve for the amount of water. So if every three sodium hydroxides, I get three moles of water. Times three sodium hydroxides gives me three waters. So that still gives me just the same amount. Mole's water. Then I do the same thing with my phosphoric acid. Um, so I have, um, my H3PO4 and I have twenty-five milliliters times zero point oh five molar. Which is zero point zero zero one two five moles. H3PO4 times times for every one phosphoric acid, I get three moles of water. For every one H3PO4, I get three waters using this stoichiometric coefficients. 0.00375 moles of water. Limiting reactant, smaller amount of product is the answer. So that's my answer, assuming I wanted moles. I didn't actually calculate, I don't think I actually specified in the problem. So anytime you're doing calculations with molarity, anytime you're doing calculations with molarity, one of the things to remember really is that my definition of molarity is a definition, but I can also use that as an equation. And at the end of the day, we're usually looking for moles. So I can take my moles that are, take my molarity multiplied by volume, get my moles, and then it's back to being a chapter eight problem. Where once I have my moles, in this case, I had moles of both of my reactants. So I can go ahead and take my moles of my sodium hydroxide, use my stoichiometric coefficients to figure out the moles of the product, same game with my phosphoric acid. So that's really, it's the same thing that you guys have done before. It's just before you guys were doing grams to moles conversions. And so you guys got kind of comfortable with grams to moles. And so now we're doing molarity. It's the same general idea. We just don't need the periodic table now. Shocker, no periodic table needed. No molar masses needed. All I need is my molarity and my volume, and I can get to moles. So it's definitely a different style of problem. But the goal is the same. We're still trying to get to moles so that we can go ahead and think about using our coefficients, using our stoichiometric factors, using our balanced chemical reaction. That part's still the same. What else can we ask you guys? Alright. Dilutions, let's do a dilution problem. Say we actually want to make that 0.05 molar phosphoric acid solution. So I want my 0.05 molar phosphoric acid solution. And I'll even say that I want my 25 milliliters of it, because hey, that works. But I have a stock solution of 2.5 molar. How much stock solution is needed? So there is an equation that we refer to as M1V1 equals M2V2. The reason why this one works is because sorry, is because like we're just saying, my molarity times my liters will give me moles. Whenever we talk about a dilution problem, what's happening in here is I'm going to have a beaker, and I'm going to add some amount of liquid to it that has that phosphoric acid, and then I'm just going to dump water on top. So when I do that and I dilute, the only thing I'm adding is water. So the number of moles of my original concentration, the moles are still there. The only thing changing is my volume and my molarity, but the number of moles are exactly the same. And that's what this equation is based on, that my moles are going to remain exactly the same. So what I'm going to do is use M1V1 equals M2V2. So I have two different solutions. I have this thing, which is what I want, and I also have what I have. So I have what I want, which is going to be my 25 milliliters times my 0.05 molar. And that's going to be equal to some unknown number of milliliters times my stock solution, 2.5 molar. Now, what I want you to notice is I said that molarity times liters is equal to moles. But in my equation right now, I've got milliliters. Why can I do that? So keep in mind, if I didn't want milliliters, if I wanted to go ahead and be like, I need liters, got to have the liters. Give myself a little more space here. What I would wind up doing is taking my 25 milliliters and saying that in there, there's 1,000 milliliters in one liter. That means I take it, but I have milliliters on both sides, so I would do the exact same thing over here. So because I have this factor on both sides of the equation, that means it cancels out and I don't need it. So as long as my volumes are the same, as long as my volumes match, it does not matter what they are. I don't have to do the conversion as long as my volumes are the same. Because essentially, whatever conversion you would be doing, you would do exactly the same thing to both sides of the equation. It cancels out. So I should take my 25 and multiply it times 0.05. And that gets me 1.25 is equal to X times 2.5. And 1.25 divided by 2.5 is 0.5. So dilution problems, usually the real trick to a dilution problem is just recognizing that that's what you're supposed to do. Since usually it doesn't actually say the word dilute anywhere in the problem. Usually it just talks about like, you want this solution and you have this other thing, so make it happen. So the wording a lot of times throws people off because it very rarely actually says dilute. But that's what's happening. You're adding water to something, and that's what's making everything work. So it's a dilution problem. I'm going to scroll back up to my set of questions. I'm going to say, except for the other things I already have mentioned out here, I've done all my calculations. I still want to do a final temperature, a bomb calorimeter, and titrations. And then there's stuff that's going to be in the follow-up video. And then my delta H values. Okay, not too bad. So let's go ahead and do titration problems. Especially because we just did the dilution equation. Yay! So let's go ahead and ask. Let's do calcium hydroxide for funsies. How much calcium hydroxide, oh, molarity, hold on, just give me, give me two shakes. Sorry, thinking too hard. To your point too. Molar hydrochloric acid. I'm going to make this bigger so you guys can actually see it. This is one of those things that sometimes my brain contemplates, like, are these numbers too easy? Should I make them more difficult? If this was an exam problem, I would probably not let them beat this round. I'm like, eh, we're getting, well, shit, I just need numbers. I don't even care what they are. Okay, how many milliliters of a 0.15 molar calcium hydroxide solution is needed to reach the equivalence point of 15 milliliters of 0.2 molar hydrochloric acid solution? So something to note, calcium hydroxide has two hydroxides for every one calcium. So if I was going to do a balanced chemical reaction for this, I would need two HCl for every chloride, water. State symbols. Eh, no, just put them in. It won't take that long. aqueous, all liquid. So how many milliliters of a 0.15 calcium hydroxide solution is needed to reach the equivalence point of a 15-milliliter? So we are going to need moles because a titration problem is all about knowing and dealing with the fact that the moles of H+ are equal to the moles of hydroxide. So I have enough information about the moles of HCl. So I can go ahead and take that 0.05 liters times my 0.2 molar HCl. And that gets me 0.1, 0.01, sorry, 0.01 moles HCl. It's also worth noting that my hydrochloric acid, when it ionizes, I get one HCl and one chloride ion. So this 0.01 moles of hydrochloric acid is the same as my moles of H H+. So those two things are in a one-to-one ratio. So this is now 0.01, this is 0.01, this is 0.01. Because all of those things are in a one-to-one ratio. But it's not true of my calcium. So I have 0.01 moles of hydroxide. But that's not how much calcium hydroxide I have. So if I have 0.01 moles of hydroxide, there's two hydroxides for every one calcium hydroxide. So I do basically then divide this one by two. And that's how many moles of calcium hydroxide. But that's not what the question asked me for. Sorry. Question wants to tell, wants me to give the milliliters of 0.15 molar. So I have this many moles. Since molarity is equal to moles divided by liters, that also means that my liters are equal to moles divided by molarity. So I've got 0.005 moles, which I can go ahead and divide by that 0.15 molar. That will give me a number in liters. So if I want milliliters, this is 33.3 milliliters. So I did this kind of a problem on purpose because this has two hydroxides for every one mole of the base. For those of you that are like, ah, she did it the long way, you can totally use M1V1 equals M2V2 for this. It's a lie, you can't. If you use M1V1 equals M2V2 for a dibasic base, you will get the wrong answer. Also, if you think that your instructor team doesn't know that trick, you're wrong. We do know that trick. So let me go ahead and show you when that trick works, by the way. Because there is a time when it works. So I'm going to take actually this exact same problem. I'm only going to change one thing, but it's a very important thing. This is now KOH. This is now in a one-to-one ratio. So now when I say that the moles of H+ are equal to the moles of hydroxide, now my moles of H+ are the same as the moles of HCl. And the moles of hydroxide are exactly the same as the moles of KOH. Because everything's in a one-to-one ratio. I have one hydroxide from my strong base, I get one proton from my acid. Everything's in a one-to-one ratio. Moles are equal across the board. Moles are equal across the board means M1V1 equals M2V2 works great. Because this dilution equation is based on the fact that the moles are equal. So if my moles are equal, that's all I need. So then I just take my molarity, 0.2 times my 50 milliliters is equal to 0.15 times my volume in some milliliters. Now, because this is potassium hydroxide, instead of a dibasic base, I should get a different number. So even though all my initial, original numbers are the same, I should not get the same number as before. I should however, get about twice as much. And this is now 66.7 milliliters. And the problem's over. So titrations, if everything is in a one-to-one ratio, definitely use M1V1 equals M2V2. It works great. If it's not all in a one-to-one ratio, the hard thing is, if you use M1V1 equals M2V2, you'll be off by a factor of two. And then the question is, do you multiply by two or divide by two? And the problem is, is that depends on how the problem is set up and what the problem is asking you for. And I mentioned that your instructor team knows this trick. So you better believe that we got a bunch of things with factors of two, if we're going to ask you guys how to do this. So just FYI. So you do need to know how to do a titration. It is worth knowing how to do it when, when you get to use the faster formula. But also be aware that that's not always, it's not an always thing. What else? What else? Back to the tippy top. Okay, my calculations, we did titrations. Okay, I got a little bit of time left. Are there any other questions in the chat?
Yes, there's one.
Great. What is it?
Are acids and bases usually on the reactant side?
Okay, so I'm smiling for a reason. For folks who had AP Chemistry, you probably know why. So here's the game. And I'll give you some examples. When it comes especially to weak acids and bases. So let me say this. So if it's, so if they're strong, so if it's, so if it's strong, strong, that, that's just yes. Strong, strong, strong acids, strong base, the answer is just yes, they are. If it's weak, it got some weird stuff that happens. Let me show you. So we already did things like, ah, actually, the water one's a really good example. So we showed this one already for dealing with. So first of all, when we are defining acids and bases, we define the reactants. So NH3 is a base because it gains a proton, water is an acid. We define these by the reactants. But what if we reverse the equation? What if we reverse the reaction? Now I have NH4. Now I have NH four plus OH minus going to water and ammonia. Now, I have something that donates a proton and loses a proton, that's an acid. And it's something that gains a proton, that um, accepts a proton. That's a base. So the thing is, in Gen Chem one, we are not going to define the products. We are going to define just the reactants. However, um, there are terms for those products because especially when you have a weak species, there is a relationship between them. Uh, and typically, right, your NH three, the ammonia becomes the ammonium ion. When you have NH three, that's a base. When you have NH four plus, it's gained a proton, that's actually a weak acid. That relationship has, we call them conjugates because they are chemically related, they are actually the same roots, the same base compound, and the only thing that's different is if it's gained or lost a proton. Um, so we do refer to those as conjugates of each other, but it's essentially a base when it does not have the extra proton. It's an acid when it's gained the additional proton and has that positive charge. So, uh, it's not a bad to try to like, look at those and like, see if you can flip the reactants and products and see what you can see. Um, but I will tell you that basically you're gonna see it when there's weak species. Um, because in strong species, you wind up with, um, just salts. They're a little bit harder to notice, uh, or a little bit harder to really parse out. So back to like sodium hydroxide plus HCl going to water and sodium chloride. Um, the hard thing here is doing this in reverse, uh, it doesn't really happen. Um, really, that's just, uh, sodium chloride in water is really just a soluble compound. And honestly, this doesn't really react, you just really have sodium and chloride, since those are strong acids and strong bases. Um, but yeah, it's something we're taking a look at, definitely we're taking a look. But yeah, we define from the reactants. So if you're ever curious, you just look at the reactants, see what happened to the reactants, that's how we're gonna base everything. Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and talk about delta H of formation, um, reactions in the eight minutes that I've got. Um, so delta H of formation, um, first of all, delta H of formation has a very specific um, definition where if we are doing something like, I mean, we've got, what do I have up there, sodium hydroxide? Um, so let's say I wanted to do a delta H of formation reaction for sodium hydroxide. Uh, what I need is I need to form one mole of sodium hydroxide from elements. It would look something like this. Um, I have to form sodium hydroxide from its elements, so that's sodium metal and then oxygen gas and then hydrogen gas. But then I have to balance this. And we're just gonna assume that this is sodium hydroxide solid to make my life a little easier. Uh, but I only need one hydrogen. I get to put a half in here, I only need one oxygen, I get to put a half in here. Because this has to be one mole. There has to only be one mole of the product, it's part of the definition. So here's the way that this works. There would then be a delta H value, an enthalpy of formation then for this particular reaction, I don't know what it is, we're just gonna go with fifteen kilojoules per mole, it's probably something way bigger than that, but that's okay. Um, so this reaction would have a delta H of formation. So if I wanted the overall, I guess we'll just do this guy. Um, I really would like some stoichiometry. Look at that one. Um, so let's say I wanted to know the delta H of, um, the enthalpy of the reaction for, um, should only do sodium hydroxide and, ah, hold on. HPO four, H three PO four going to water plus, this is aqueous, this is aqueous, that's a liquid. And what am I left with? Uh, sodium PO four, that's also aqueous. Three of those, three of those, okay. So if I wanna know the value of enthalpy of the reaction for this, what I'm actually gonna do is I need a table. And my table's gonna have values for sodium hydroxide, for phosphoric acid, for water as a liquid, and for sodium phosphate. So delta H of formation. Um, we already said that this is just gonna be like, uh, we're just gonna make some stuff up, this is fifteen. Uh, this is negative forty nine, this is negative, um, forty eight. This is positive two. I don't know, I have no idea what these numbers are supposed to be, I just need some numbers. Then in order to actually calculate this, this is where change is equal to final minus initial, we've already done that one before. But my delta H is gonna be equal to products minus reactants. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take my sodium phosphate, my, which is positive two, so there's one product, plus my waters. There's my waters, uh, I have three of them at negative forty eight each. There's my products, minus my reactants. Uh, I have three sodium hydroxides. Um, so three times fifteen plus one H three PO four, um, at negative forty nine. So I took my products minus my reactants, so here's my four plus three waters minus my three NH hydro, my three sodium hydroxides plus my H three PO four. Did I do all that? Yay, okay, good, it's all there, well psyched, did I get all the pieces? So it's products minus reactants. So this side is negative one forty two, minus three times fifteen, which is forty five, plus a negative forty nine, minus negative four. So negative one forty two plus four negative one thirty eight kilojoules. And that would be my value of enthalpy for the reaction. So that's how you find enthalpy of a reaction. Um, when you have delta H of formation, enthalpy of formation. So you've got a bunch of things in a table and you use products minus reactants. The big deal with the difference between enthalpy of formation and bond enthalpies, delta H of formation are gonna be compounds and potentially elements. Um, when you have bond enthalpies, those are bonds. So your table looks different because in bond enthalpies, you've got like a hydrogen, hydrogen bond. You have a hydrogen oxygen bond, you have a carbon, carbon bond. Uh, as opposed to water, phosphoric acid, sodium hydroxide. Um, so delta H of formation, you've got a bunch of compounds to put all together. Okay. Um, we're just about out of time, are there any other questions that I can add to my list for my follow-up video tomorrow morning?
I actually don't see any this time.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, we will stop there because that'll let me blow my nose before my next meeting. And follow-up video will go, will be first thing in the morning because I'm, I'm getting tired. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Bye, thanks y'all.